There we go, there we go. All right, folks, it's a little after nine of the meeting started for us here. Start with the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dana, Carolyn, some prayer.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the beautiful day that you've given us and and the beautiful county that you've given to us to to serve. We ask that you be with us in this meeting and that you help guide and direct us so that anything that we do would be in accordance to your will. And again, we thank you for this wonderful county and the people in it. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen, thank you. Morning, everyone. Get a copy of my agenda out here. First up is the approval of minutes, as everybody had to take a chance to take a look at those.
Yes.
Any comments or questions? If not, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor? Aye. In the matter of claims, we have payroll at two hundred and eighty thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and seventy cents. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve payroll, two thousand eighty, three tenths, point seventy.
I have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor? Aye. Regular claims, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars and nineteen cents. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary on those. Any questions or concerns? If not, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve, approve regular claims, two eighty-one, nine twenty-five, nineteen cents.
Got a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by, motion by Joel, second by Bob, all in favor? Aye. And out-of-cycle claims of a total of ninety-six thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents. We have COVID clinic visas one, two, and four. DOB design, Old National Wealth Utilities, and LAL. Again, for a total of ninety-six thousand, four fourteen and ten cents. Do I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve out-of-cycle claims.
I have a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor? Aye. There's about six or seven piles here, let's just go ahead and take care of these. There is no, let's see, Sheila, want to give us any financial updates, please?
I just printed out your normal monthly schedule and review. I know everybody's been working on their budgets and had copies of stuff. Gary had a book, I think, to work with, to work on your budgets. Everybody is pretty much where they need to be. We've received some grant funds in this weekend, a couple of them have zeroed out, which is a good thing. Just going into budget hearings, I think we're we're set and trying to balance out. And everybody's did good in getting budgets taken in, or at least conversation with us to keep going. Hopefully have manuals out by Friday to everybody.
Excellent. And as Sheila did mention, I did finish our budgets last night. I've give a copy to each of the commissioners, the attorney, and they've been turned in to Sheila. So we should be good to go. And with that, let's bring up health insurance. If you want to, just throw another chair up there and all of yous can come up at the same time. Make it easier that way. Morning, folks.
Morning. I'll go, well, Brittany is passing those around. I'll go ahead and just make a couple of quick statements. We know we don't have much time today. We just wanted to give you an update on the health insurance, the IU health plans. Just as a reminder, we were able to secure a two-year rate guarantee that actually will go another eighteen months. So these numbers are only relevant from the standpoint of where you are for the first six months of the first year. I'm not going to take your time to go through all these numbers, although if you have any questions down the road about any of these, we can certainly drill down. I did want to point out a couple that I think are relevant, again, very early because we're got another eighteen months to to go on on the plan before any type of renewal. One thing, talking about budget that we talked with Sheila about, that we are going to try to get some type of estimation from IU health plans, that if the renewal was actually this year, based on the claims that you currently have, and the premiums ratio, and the large claimants, and all the things that go into making that decision, if they could at least give us some estimation under that assumption, what the renewal increase might or might not be. So we're, that ask is out, we should have that information for you, at least an estimation when we meet with the council, and I'm not sure if any of the commissioners will be at that meeting coming up or not. So I'll quickly go through these, and I've highlighted a couple. Year-to-date premiums paid in is seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, and this is for claims between four-one-twenty-two and three-thirty-one-twenty-twenty-three. And claims actually paid, so it's in current of the claim is one thing, and then through May, the claims that have actually been paid, so it is a twelve-month period of time. So during that period of time, year-to-date premiums were basically three-quarters of a million dollars, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand. The claims, the total claims were five sixty-nine, eight twenty-two. Of the five sixty-nine, eight twenty-two, medical claims were three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Prescriptions were two hundred and forty-five thousand, okay? As we talk, and and we have Wes here to just, from Proactive MD, that we know that you wanted a quick update with, one of the potential advantages of the clinic and the communication strategy to encourage more use of the clinic is that a lot of those prescriptions potentially could be given out by the clinic and would come away from IU health plan, thus potentially saving some type of premiums down the road, okay? Also, under claims expense amount of large claimants, you have two claim, large claimants, which means over fifty thousand. Of those, one is still active on the case. First, a group of this size only having one is favorable. Again, we still have quite a while until the actual renewal number would be be given, but so far that is encouraging. On the back page, on the next page, go down to medical utilization. You've only, you've had three hospital admissions for this twelve-month period of time compared to three hospital admissions the year before, so that's no big increase or decrease there. And then the total primary care provider utilization, you've had fifteen hundred PCP visits, which is five percent higher than it was a year ago. So we don't know what the story is behind that. That could be a good thing, that could be a negative thing, but I think it's important to know that the plan is in fact being used. The question is, can your investment in the clinic, okay, which is to be seen, and one of the reasons we have Wes here, with an adequate strategy to get the communications there, can that bring those visits down? Because, again, more towards the clinic than in the long run is a part of the investment strategy of easy proactive, okay? Any questions whatsoever?
No, Ron, he always does a great job, and we appreciate that. Obviously, for the folks that don't know, and we've discussed this many times, we've been able to lock in a four-year rate with IU Health through Ron's company, which has been an absolute huge bonus for Owen County. So the reason some of this discussion is here today, as in this twenty-four budget that we just figured, and by you knowing it is the largest line item on my budget sheet. So that's why it's important that we get everybody here working together. We know what proactive is doing for us because we're spending some money on that as well. So I appreciate you working ahead to try to get us a general idea of what we're looking at for 2025. Because we, as a board, have got some decisions to make. As cost goes up, do we cut one item to to save? Do we raise our employees' rates? Lot of things going on in the next twelve months, so we appreciate everything.
We appreciate your confidence.
And Wes, I'll introduce myself, Gary Burton, this is Bob, Gary, Joel Lo. We went through a few of you folks out there, so I don't know what number you are, but hopefully you're here to stay.
That's the plan. I appreciate, I think, Wes Manter, Proactive MD, some Indiana native just up the street, nice country drive on the west side of Plainfield, Danville address, so I appreciate the opportunity to get down here. Went to Cascade High School, so I spent some time in in the high school down the street, so I get that stuff out of the way. But appreciate the opportunity to be here. I have this glamorous title, as I tell people, as the the regional president for Proactive MD. That means absolutely nothing to everybody in this room, other than what can I do to help you? And so the story behind this is quickly, Proactive MD, as you know it, for those who may not be extremely familiar, partner with employers to offer direct primary care to your employees and their family members. So our intent, our role, is to be able to provide highest-quality primary care and access to primary care to your employees and their family members, but also while doing that, generate savings for the employer, which is naturally the county here in this situation. So I want to walk through some of those highlights, and just so you know, so I want to hit on some of the numbers here, and then a takeaway is partnering with Ron and Brittany, as well as Matty and team, to put together a communication strategy to drive greater engagement and utilization in the health center. But I want to hit some of the highlights that have taken place over the past twenty-four to thirty months in terms of improvement of financials, as well as engagement in in the health center, if that sounds good, and I can through those numbers pretty quick. From twenty-one to twenty-two, the employee engagement went from thirty-three percent to forty-nine percent. That's a big jump. And I would tell you, on average, you know, the target is somewhere in the forty to forty-five percent total employee engagement range when it comes to these employer-sponsored programs, and you you might think, wow, that seems kind of low. Well, for us it is, and so our challenge is to get more in the sixty to seventy percent range. And how do we do that? That is multiple modes of communication, that's being on-site, that's assisting with open enrollment meetings, working with Matty to understand what modes of communication work best for for your population. So again, that's what we're gonna, what we're gonna get into. From a financial perspective, and I'll just jump and and cut to the chase there, the investment that the county makes with Proactive MD on an annual basis averages around ninety, ninety, ninety-two thousand dollars, give or take, based on the enrollment and participation in the program. In in twenty-one, the annual ROI was just over one point one, it was actually one point one-one. So there's a positive return, obviously, we're always looking for that. I can tell you, there's some employers that say, hey, we we just want this to be a benefit for their employees, we don't care what the return is. Those are minorities, those don't happen very often, so we're always looking to.
You're not getting that from this board, I can tell you.
Yeah, absolutely, not looking for that response, for sure. In twenty-two, I had a, I had a great jump, and went from one point one to one point nine-five, that generated just over eighty-eight thousand dollars in savings for for the county. We can get into some of those details as we we go into the future, but we take a a very conservative approach to that calculation. So it's not adding fluff of productivity or absenteeism or anything like that, it's truly hard dollars, and the impact we're making by diverting care into the health center as opposed to the traditional plan, which naturally costs more money. But also, it's maintaining and improving the lives of those who have chronic conditions, so diabetes, high blood pressure, high cholesterol, and taking a really, really hard focus and hard look. Our target for those individuals, to the extent that we know and have access to information, is to engage eighty percent of those who have a chronic condition. And by engagement, getting into the weeds real quick, how we measure engagement for somebody with a chronic condition is that they have, they have a visit three times a year with a provider. That's not just coming in for a blood draw, or doing a fasting, or a nurse visit, or anything like that. Three visits a a year with a provider. So we will, again, work with with Matty and and team to put together some some goals that we want to accomplish to drive greater engagement in those areas, which by default is is going to drive greater savings back to the plan. And you just mentioned, you know, the situation with health insurance, looking for areas of, you know, can we cut here to invest in there? Well, our our goal is to help you save money and leave that decision up to you as to where the the rest gets invested. So that's a a quick thousand-foot overview. The the clinic and the health center is open forty hours a week, we have a fantastic care team there, a lot of energy, a lot of high high activity that that goes through there, which generates a lot of rapport with patients, which is, which is always a plus. And if that's not working, then then our role is is pretty, pretty difficult to be successful on. Anything?
I can tell you from my standpoint, from the response that I get back from employees throughout the county, they are extremely satisfied with the service that they get out there. Our concern is, I think, is that county, and definitely this board and the council, because we're paying for this, is to get as many employees out there as we possibly can. Because if we're going to invest with you, we need to make sure that we're investing enough that we're saving on this side.
Absolutely.
And again, next year, excuse me, 2025 is going to be crucial for our health insurance in this county.
Sure.
So we've had this conversation many times, Ron, Sheila, we've been here before with proactive. What I'd like to see happen is is a promotion with our staff, with you, within the next six months, because I think this is up in January or February, something like that, I don't know for sure, but I know it's the beginning of the year, if I'm not mistaken, to promote your company to our employees in in any way and every way that we can. I want to get that number as high as we possibly can get, so if that means you have to come in here once a week and go around and see all of our people and shake their hand and say, hey, come see us, so be it.
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. No, appreciate that, and and one of the ideas that that Ron had mentioned earlier too is connecting on pharmacy, right? Pharmacy draws a lot of costs, and and there oftentimes can be overlap between the most commonly prescribed medications going through your medical plan and those medications that are distributed through the health center, which are free to the employees. So that's another incentive of a communication, being able to put together documentation to share with with folks and say, hey, oh, by the way, did you know that these medications are available at no cost to you through the health center? So that generates further engagement, and and that drives down costs.
And I don't think we've been fully educated on everything that's provided. And thank you, Sheila, for shaking your head no, because I I agree with that. We need to do more of that, and whether it's with you, your people training our people, whatever needs to be done. And again, I know I've got some employees sitting out here that Alan's a big, big believer in the, and we've talked about it, and I and I want to keep it going, but I want to make sure that we're saving that money.
That makes sense, yeah, so there's opportunity, great.
Guys, you got anything? And I know that neither one of you were involved when this all came about, so I've been dealing with it for a little while.
Well, it makes sense, Gary, you do wise to its fullest.
Absolutely.
Take advantage of it.
The more that we use, the less we're going to pay Ron, so.
And I would, I would also say objectively, because our responsibility is to advise and advocate for you, okay? But as we help evaluate Proactive MD, I will tell you, even with changes, many of the changes that they've had in leadership, we have personally and professionally the most respect for their leadership right now than we've seen from proactive in a while, so.
That's a positive.
The proof will be in the pudding, but we look forward to working with Wes and Bethany to to see, make this evaluation happen, so.
Go ahead, Sheila.
There was a meeting a couple of weeks ago with with them, I think you were on.
Yeah.
The backside of the camera that I couldn't see. There, there were reports that were being provided for just a couple of months, and then those just quit. I think that should go to all seven council members and all three commissioners, as well as to Matty and them in my office. That communication is big, and I think when we do the open enrollment, everybody feels rushed that they got to hurry up and sign up, so they just stick with what we have with the IU ends of things and and think, okay, I'm not going to do that. I myself learned a couple of weeks ago that I have a clinic that I'd rather be going to that is closer, I didn't realize. In all of this that I've been doing, that there were five other clinics, so that in itself is, I think, if you could just meet with the employees, or or at least go department to department and and have them set it up, and as much information and flyers that you can hand to them, is going to be that open communication and moving it forward, because if we don't know about it, we can't use it, and or, again, explaining the little things. The location, it has been one of the things that's been a concern, people are, I don't want to go to the school, I don't want to do that. Again, the sale there is, there's, there's parking spots that are are reserved for them, and and it is an in-and-out and a half hour, they're their initial visits. So I just think really getting that educational side of it out of there and working on it as much as possible before the renewal to see where we're at is.
No, I agree with you, and you're right, Sheila, we did get those reports and they just kind of faded away. I look at that stuff, obviously, I'm the one that makes the decisions, and this board does, on these insurance before it goes to the council. So it's important that we we get that information.
Yeah.
And another thing Sheila just touched on, there are other locations out there, and we're not taking anything away from the one here in Owen County, but we got folks that live in Coal City, closer to Terre Haute, if they're, if that's where they shop, that's where they do their business. We need to know where those places are at, so if they're, if that's where they go to shop and that's where they do their daily business, they need to know where those locations are at, so if you can help us with that, and and we hope we see you five years from now, sitting here.
Yeah, absolutely, that would be wonderful. And I think inviting the spouses to come to those meetings on different departments, because a lot of times this spouse might be taking care of the healthcare.
Absolutely, good idea, Ron.
Something that would be great. Also, I want to thank Brittany, and again, Sheila, Matty's just been great to work with, for their support, and she's the one that does ninety-nine percent on a daily basis to support your people, so very appreciative of Brittany and Sheila.
Ron, thank you, thank you all, appreciate very much, thank you, guys, have a good day. And we'll see you back on the second of August, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a rezone application, AME Investments. Dana, I'll let you take over from here.
Yes, sir. Plan Commission did meet, and the application name is Kurt Meyer with AEM Investments LLC. The parcel number involved is sixty-dash-ten-dash-twenty-one-dash-three-hundred-dash-four-hundred-dot-three-sixty-three-dash-oh-twenty-seven. The current zone and classification.
Dana, he, can you speak a little, he can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. The, the current classification is residential, single-family residential, and the requested rezone is for business. The property owner is wanting to build two self-storage units on this property. Notice has been sent to all adjacent landowners of record via certified mail ten days prior to the meeting, and proof of the saying is is attached. Notice has been placed in a newspaper of general circulation within the county ten days prior to the meeting. The proposed request has been available for public inspection for at least ten days prior to the hearing on the matter. The rezoning of this property would not adversely affect adjacent landowners, and the proposed zoning of the property is consistent with the master plan, that is, the findings of the Plan Commission from their hearing. And so the Plan Commission motioned to forward the above rezone request to the Board of Commissioners with a recommendation of favorable by a vote of six to zero with zero abstentions. There were no recommended contingencies. And so the ordinance, should you choose to accept it, is an ordinance to amend the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance. Now, now therefore, being ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, Indiana. Section one, the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance, as amended, is hereby amended to rezone the following described real estate situated in Washington Township, Owen County, Indiana. It gives the legal, full legal description. And the property address is eight fifty-one East Franklin Street, Spencer, Indiana. The general location is in the seven block east of the courthouse in Spencer. And it gave the parcel number. Section two, the above described real estate should be and the same is hereby rezoned from single-family residential to business. And then the effect of this ordinance shall be at full force and effect from the, from and after its adoption, and it's whether it's adopted or passed.
So we need to address the rezone first and then go back to this. Any questions or concerns?
What was the ordinance number?
It is zero-zero-eight, Bob.
Zero-zero.
But before we tackle that, we need to go ahead and approve or disapprove the rezone. Bob, I know you're on the Plan Commission, you've sat through these meetings, we highly take the recommendation of the Plan Commission. I have no issues with this.
I have none.
Ben, with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve the rezone of the, let me find the addressing. Property at eight fifty-one East Franklin Street, Spencer, Indiana, from residential to business. Do I have, hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Bob, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor? Aye. This only requires the President's signature, so I'll take care of that. Sheila will attest. You want to sign it now? And then with that being said, do I hear a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-three-zero-zero-eight, an ordinance to amend the Owen County zoning and subdivision control ordinance?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number twenty-two-three-zero-zero-eight.
I have a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor? Aye. You're good to go, sir. That's it.
That's it, thank you.
You're welcome. You have a good day.
Yeah, you too.
Highway, just updates in general. Greg, I hope you're feeling better, I know you've been rough the last couple of days.
Lot better.
I'd still recommend you go home at the end of the day, end of this meeting.
I didn't even want to talk to him on the phone.
I stopped out there, I was like, stay away from me.
Good morning, Commissioners. As we go through our presentation this morning, we need to read into the records some roads so we can get our inventory of the day. Chad will do that when we get to this point, because I'm about out of breath as I breathe, as I speak.
Trying to breathe.
Commissioners, on Croft Road, there was an automobile accident last month, and a culvert was damaged. The insurance company has reached out to us to make repair and is ready to go to check. I explained to them that we can get an outside contractor to do that work. We have bids, we've reached out to several, but we received two back. In order to proceed, Commissioners, I need a decision made if these bids are pleasurable to you, so we can get this done. And they, they are quotes. Each person, each contractor, there were several emailed out, was given the same quote sheet, so everything is apples to apples.
There are two bids for the Croft, Croft Road, one from DuBois Excavating LLC, and one from All-Out Construction and and Excavating. Both envelopes are sealed. Beginning with DuBois Excavating. The quote amount is for five thousand eight hundred dollars, and this is installing cables over top of the pipe, could be necessary as a note to ensure flow, flowable fill will not push the culvert up. So that's a note that they have added, so DuBois Excavating, five thousand eight hundred dollars.
Greg, is this with us supplying the pipe and their company, insurance company paying for it? for it?
Insurance company will take, be paid for the flowable fill. I've spoken with them, they'll be paying for the rocks that's been down there, the pipe and.
Okay. I'm just trying to determine, these are labor only?
Labor only.
Insurance is paying Owen County Highway for all other expenses?
That is correct.
Okay.
Who's the main, DuBois? Sorry? First name? Her first name, Maureen Grayden. She says DuBois Excavating LLC, so that's the business name.
Commissioners, quotes put out public, I do not control who gives those quotes. You'll have to make those decisions yourself.
Yeah.
Okay. The second bid was from All Out Construction and Excavating. Their quote amount is twelve thousand nine hundred dollars. And DuBois Excavating, five thousand eight hundred dollars. All Out Construction, twelve thousand nine hundred dollars.
Commissioners, I will note that we have several contractors that normally bid, but they are so busy that they were unable to do so.
Since he just opened these, why don't we take this under advisement? You look at them, make sure we've got apples to apples, everything's there that needs to be done. There's a substantial difference in these two quotes. So I want to make sure that you're satisfied.
I'm bonded.
All contractors are, they have to provide insurance to us, so if they're ready to start, we can have that in possession.
Why don't you hand those back to Greg, Dana, and let him, and we'll make a decision here.
I may even look at them here shortly and tell you, it may take some while.
And if it takes a while after the meeting, we have to come back, that's, we'll do that. Again, that's over double.
Okay. Commissioners, the next thing that I have for you is a request from Spittman Communications, main office in Ellisville in regard to variance on the depth of the project that they had on the Suter Lane. Gentlemen, our ordinance states that utilities must be at forty-eight inches. They, they came to me and wanted to, a variance to thirty inches. I denied that. We did have some communication and I believe that thirty-six inches would be appropriate. They changed their position. I got an email this morning and they are asking for a variance of thirty-six inches from the forty-eight due to the terrain in the area. And we've worked that, it has it on a rock shelf. And I understand their concern. So it is the pleasure, but I can't agree with the thirty-six inch variance on this project though.
Well, Greg, you and I talked about this and agreed on thirty-six inches. We did some investigating. I've talked, I haven't had a chance to talk to you, one of you gentlemen about this. Monroe County is thirty-six inches as well. NDOT state level is forty-eight, and I think that that's where Mr. Bryant come up with that number to put in our ordinance. So I've asked Dana to amend the forty-eight and change it to thirty-six countywide. And before we make that motion, I want to make sure you're satisfied because that seems to be the standard for county.
I agree with the thirty-six inch standard, but Commissioners, the forty-eight inch has made companies like A T and T have to contact us and go out on site because they are our worst offender of anything. And the moment the county or any other contractor makes a mistake, A T and T gives them an expungent bill. So I do agree with the, I do agree with thirty-six inch depth. I think that that's pretty standard other than NDOT, but we need to keep some teeth in our ordinance just because we have some utility companies that don't like to abide by the rules.
And we fought this time and time again over the years. We went to clean out a ditch and there's thirty-eight inches in the, in the ground. We ran into that with the gas company, had a horrible time, so.
We spoke, me and Greg spoke last night and thirty-six is okay. We know that in fact, there's going to be spots in, it does not make it to thirty-six inches.
Absolutely.
And, but thirty-six is, you know, adequate, you know, it should do the trick, but.
We got to protect ourselves.
We got to protect ourselves.
You know, if we're doing normal work out here on our farms and our homes, we shoot for thirty-six inch depth, so I think it's fair.
Okay.
I concur with it.
Dana, do you have a ordinance there or?
Commissioners, yes. As we spoke yesterday about this issue last night, I did prepare an ordinance that's only changes that ordinance from forty-eight to thirty-six. No other provisions of that ordinance are changed.
Very good.
We did go ahead and number some ordinances. I got a couple others. So I would ask that we approve that ordinance during the attorney comment section so that we can keep things in order.
Absolutely. Okay. I think we have some other highway ordinance related issues.
Commissioners, the other thing, I just need to inform you that, you know, we're on a four day work week and that we may, it is paving season. We may be working some Fridays. We continue with four, ten hour days, but we will be putting in some overtime, believe me, because maybe working later days are going into Fridays in order to complete projects.
And your overtime allows that budget?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
I don't particularly like doing that, but just the nature of the storms that have put us behind, that we need to be prepared.
Yeah, and I'm sure we're not done with those either, so.
No, looks like there's one coming tomorrow.
Yep.
Okay, Chad, if you would, we need to read into record, Commissioners, and we're dealing with Jefferson Township. There will be some cleanup in regard to all townships when we're done, Commissioners. There are some areas that I need to meet with each and every one of you to go over your thought process on how to move forward with some roadways. If this gets the bulk of this completed and then once this is read in, I'll have a staff member come copy this so we don't have any issues of getting them to Sheila.
Okay, Harrington Road, from Clark Orchard to the Dead End, we're adding point six five a mile. Delaney Road, be no change. Walls Road, no, I'm sorry, Willows Road, no change. Precinct, no change. Burns Road, no change. Beach Church Road, no change. Stockton Road, no change. Kelly Road, no change. Dalton Road, no change. Short Line, no change. Delaney Road, no change. Walls Road, no change. Blackberry, no change. Eganoff, no change. Coal City Arnie, no change. Al Road, no change. Hayfield Road, no change. Hubble Station, no change. Pleasant Bethel, no change. Steubenville, point zero one miles. Jonestown Road, plus point zero four. Well, that's another portion of Jonestown Road. So we're actually adding, yes, point zero five to Jonestown Road. County Route eight fifty south, plus point zero one miles, adding. Main Street, adding point zero two miles. That would be in town Coal City. Poplar Street in Coal City, no change. Walnut Street, Coal City, no change. Second Street, Coal City, no change. Third Street, Coal City, no change. Fourth Street, Coal City, no change. Fifth Street, Coal City, no change. Sixth Street, Coal City, no change. Eighth Street, Coal City, no change. Postetler Street, Coal City, no change. Ray Cemetery Road, we're adding point zero nine miles. Jackson Road, no change. Fiskus Cemetery Road, adding point two four miles. Porter Road, no change. Bottom Road, no change. The Four Road, adding point zero six miles. Bussadia Road, adding point zero three miles. No change on Clash Road. Turkey Creek Road, no change. Bridgewater Road, no change. Stanch Road, no change. Warland Road, adding point zero seven miles. Truax Road, adding point zero nine miles. Wagler Road, no change. Stall Road, no change. Schaefer Road, no change. Reynolds Road, no change. Coal City Arnie Road, no change. Pine Road, no change. Lehman Road, adding point zero eight miles. Griffith Road, no change. Thatcher Road, adding point zero one miles. Macalee Road, adding point zero two miles. Dutch Bethel Road, adding point zero one miles. Lake Creek, adding point zero three miles. South Byerly, no change. New Road, adding point zero two miles. Shepherd Road, no change. Lauer Milk Road, adding point zero six miles. And Bond Road, no change.
Thank you, Chad.
Okay, Commissioners, I would ask for a vote to accept these roads as we presented them to be added and certified to the inventory.
Do I hear a motion to approve certification to add to inventory?
I made a motion to accept these roads for inventory.
Got a motion by Bob. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor? Aye. And folks?
Commissioners, a little bit about Jefferson Township. Commissioner Lowe and I have spoken. There is an area of Beach Church Road that allowed several miles back into the inventory. It has been closed for a while and the discussion in regard to that is because of the accidents that happened out on the state highway in regard to our Amish community. And it is believed that we could add public safety if we could connect this area of Beach Church back to Ormond Road. So it'll take a little bit more work to do that. There are also some other areas, just to explain some things that I have to go back over. Cat Road, Davis Road, Croft Road. There are some issues that will take a Commissioner and myself to go through in order to make some substantial changes there.
And you're absolutely right, Greg. We've got roads throughout the county and every district that's like that. Mud Road comes to mind. I mean, there's, there's other ones out there that we need to, to deal with. And for the citizens that don't know, giving these increases in these miles of these roads is additional revenue to the Highway Department. We're shortchanging ourself. And so this is something that's taken some time to go through every township, but it will put more money back into the county pocket.
That is correct.
I want to get a copy of that list.
Huh.
Can I have a copy of the road course that you read? Is that what?
Yeah. I've missed one. I've heard somebody up here have copied it.
I only missed one.
So.
See, I got it.
Oh, every one of them. Yeah, we'll do that after the meeting.
I want to comment. Greg's right. In the past, a lot of these roads were abandoned. I wouldn't say closure vacated. They had, some are dead ended, some are, and the truth of it is maybe we weren't in a financial position at that time to save these roads. We're getting a little better commerce going out there. Things are hopefully slightly better economic wise. And it would do justice to get some of these roads opened up and relieve traffic and other locales throughout the county. So me and Superintendent Norton have been working in my district to bind those roads. And with any kind of luck, we'll be adding road mileage. Obviously, if it's too big a task, we won't take it on. I think Beach Church will be a, be a good road we can get on.
Yeah, relatively simply done, I believe, so.
We're already maintaining a portion of it and a culvert. So.
Basically, it's been farmed over, but the road base is still there, so.
Well, something that we just recently got into is we've contracted an outside contractor to help clean up roadside and his piece of equipment will grind up to a ten inch tree. So it would be a perfect avenue to use to help clean up and open up these, these roadbeds backup that's got undergrowth on them. So it's something that we can look at as we move forward. And since I'm speaking of that, Greg and I talked to Mr. Strunk, he contacted us, he's probably talked to you about it. We, we've hired him as an outside contractor for forty hours just to see what he can get done. He started that process and seems to be doing a very good job, so.
Awesome.
I, I think it's something that we need to look at as we move forward in doing a permanent contract, if we can afford that in our budget.
I agree, you know, wheels in regard to mowing. Commissioners, we spend thousands of dollars on machines to mow road sides. These machines take the beating. Our New Holland machine is, I had to send it back to Southeastern to get a boom repair. Massey, we did an in-shop repair of the deck. And then we have a siding mower, but it's been one of those seasons keeping these machines running. Now these repairs are made, the machines should last a while. The New Holland really basically never shuts off. We run it year round. But it is hard to get over the county with the mowing equipment that we have and then we have breakdowns, but sometimes it doesn't get done in a timely manner. The, and then another thing, Commissioners, I need to address is the beaver issue again on Al Hall Road.
We have D N R with us here today. We need to address that.
You know, in two thousand nineteen, we went up and we broke Beaver Dam along the edge of the road that we thought was a huge issue and myself as a superintendent got in a lot of trouble with that. That was the property owner's thing to do, even though we reached it from the edge of the county road. This same location, the beaver back, if you stand at the edge of it, Commissioners, there's a huge ecosystem in there. There's, I could see when the sun shines in, huge fish. You know, of course, the beaver are there and other wildlife. I know that that property owner doesn't want that to leave, but I can tell you it is destroying our road. I don't know where to go with this beaver issue, Commissioners. I need some help.
Well, I'm gonna ask.
Beavers, you have to talk to fish and wildlife about that.
If you can give us some direction.
Yeah, yeah, you can call me and I can help you get. Yeah, yeah, you can call me and I can help you get to the right person regarding beaver control and all that, so.
Yeah, we appreciate it. It's continuing to get worse, and I can tell that at some time, the water's gonna be with the road out there because of it.
Once they get established, you gotta trap them.
And that's not the only location within the county. And I think we should probably lean on the Wildlife Division of DNR to get rid of these. Yeah, I like ecosystem like the next guy, but how long are we gonna let them destroy our roads and bridges?
I'm not too sure Fish and Wildlife will do the trapping for you, but they can at least, you know, run through with, you know, what's the legality of it.
That's our concern.
Yeah, I mean, that's probably-
They don't want them.
Well, I dealt with this before, and Jim was the county attorney, the property owner didn't want the beaver removed, so.
They need to find a new home, because they'll come right back.
There was the problem.
Yeah, we will move forward with that, with DNR and see what we need to do. Dana needs to get involved as well, whatever, but it needs to be taken care of.
Commissioners, I have nothing else today, other than we need to revisit the pump station road project sometime. As far as, you know, I'd like one of you to meet with me and the three property owners involved. I have the final solution, I have spoke to them individually. But we just we need a final decision from the board after we make that disagreement with them.
I know I followed two of those landowners, they want to keep that road open, and I agree with that. I was misunderstanding that the gentleman was going to pay the four thousand dollars for the pipe. Are we, is that not what we discussed in here at one of our meetings?
Well, that is what we discussed, but the water is going to go from one side of the road to the other, and the property owner that owns the ditch, Mr. Willie Williamson, wants everybody to be in the same room, so everybody's in, they have the same understanding, so it doesn't become a neighbor quarrel. In the onset of this situation out there, when they were all three mad at each other, they wanted the road closed. And now that they've thought about it, and the board said, well, okay. And we were gonna close it, they changed their mind.
And now they want it open.
Yeah, so I believe we have a solution, I've worked with them.
Why don't we schedule something at the Highway Department with these individuals and us? It's an administrative function, it's not something that we're gonna vote on. We've already agreed that the pipe was four thousand dollars, the individual was going to pay for that. As long as everybody's in agreeance in that room, you tell me otherwise.
We could prepare an agreement that would be approved at a board meeting.
After that, after that, okay.
Of that meeting.
That work for you?
Yes.
If you want to schedule these individuals, come to Highway Department, get with us, we'll come out there, come up with some type of agreement, and then we can put it in legal form.
Okay, Dana, I'll just get with you on a good thing.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, thank you.
Thanks, Greg, get well, get some rest. All right, any other elected officials, department heads, Chris?
So as you know, the last well, our roof took the beating, that tail storm. The large section of the roof, I'm hoping will be done today, putting decking on underneath.
I was gonna check with you today and see how progress was.
And then all that'll have left is on the EMS occupied area, those two wings and then the tower will be next. And that kind of leads into with the humidity we've had here in the last week or so, we've been having a lot of drips coming from our air conditioning and ceiling.
Can I stop you there just a second? Did Steve Carroll come down and look at Vanning? He was supposed to come down and look at that building about possibly, so he didn't show up, okay.
Steve Gray talked to me yesterday about talking to the to the vendor that's doing the roofing and see how hard it would be to put those turbines on it.
To exhaust, yeah.
So the vendor, the owner of Kennedy wasn't there yesterday, just his squirming, decided he didn't feel comfortable talking to them. Possible negotiation there with that. So I'm waiting for him to show up, maybe today, and I'll talk to him about that.
That should be fairly inexpensive, but as big as that building is, it'll take four or six, yeah, for its size, yeah.
Yeah. So what we, what Steve Gray had done, he talked to HFI. I can't remember if I talked to you guys in the meeting about those vents being metal.
Yeah.
The humidity and everything, it's just, it's like a glass of water sitting there, you know, collects water on the outside of the glass. And that's what's happening. So HFI told him to take some spray adhesive and then put insulation on that. And it worked for a little while, it's, of course, it's more humid now, and we're still getting the humidity issues, so. I sent one of the guys over yesterday to the hardware store, and I'm gonna do a trial on one of the vents and use closed cell spray foaming around that. May not look the best, but if we can get a dense foam on it that won't let air into that metal versus the batting insulation that still lets air into that metal, hopefully that will take care of it. So I'm gonna do a test on one of them. And then there are three vents that we cannot get to, but they're getting ready to pull the roof off of that part of the building. So when they pull the roof off of the building, I'm gonna climb in there and work on those vents and try to get them-
Get them while you can, yeah.
If that doesn't work, let's pursue replacing those with plastic vents. You can get those a lot of times in the same construction, but they're of a plastic material that won't draw.
Won't draw, it's much more strong, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's awesome.
I didn't know they could make those.
Yeah, you, yeah, if they're, are they the square ones, Chris? They got the louvers in them?
Square ones, yeah, they're small, a small square louver, and then a bigger one, and then a bigger one.
I believe you can get those in a poly product.
And then I was also supposed to get a quote for garage door panels, where the panels got dented from the from the-
Was there metal as well, Chris, besides the doors, or metal on that side of the building?
A few pieces, and I'm still waiting for a quote from that. Just a few small pieces. That metal on the outside of the building's heavier than what the metal for the garage door is, so it didn't dent as easily.
To maybe to save you some effort here on this, and Sheila correct me if I'm wrong, but I've talked to John Parvally several times. Fix it. Get it fixed, don't need quotes, it's an emergency, it's damaged, go ahead and get it done, we'll turn it into the insurance company, they're gonna take care of it.
And then
if I misspoke there, let me know, but I've spoke to John several times.
We got a window on, one ambulance has a windshield on the ambulance, we got that repaired, and you've got the bill on that. I think that-
Yeah, just seeing that stuff you get, Chris, just turn them into Sheila, and we'll get them paid, and then we'll sort it all out once we get the insurance money, because we had, I think we had eight total sheriff cars, total, not repairable, but total.
Luckily, our ambulance, we just got the one windshield, so.
Got the call Friday.
So we're just driving around till we get one?
Yeah.
Okay, well.
That's all I've got, unless you guys have anything for me, questions, comments?
Just get your building fixed, whoever you got quotes from, and keep that rolling, just turn up paperwork, Ken.
Did you get your tablets?
They were supposed to be here yesterday, I haven't heard anything. He said he'd be surprised if they arrived yesterday, that's what he told me, so. I guess Microsoft told me that they would be there yesterday, he said, but I'll be surprised, so. Another day or two, I'll get him a call.
Typical commerce right now, everything's behind. All right, Chris, thanks for everything.
Thank you, Chris.
Alan? Oh, you're fine again.
So, sorry, taking off time. I was already talking about the email address issue, you said you could work with us on that. We're trying to get in touch with the Commissioner a little bit here, just for, I have just gotten trained as a instructor for stop bleeding program in the state. I was just trying to get in contact with the three of you. I've talked to Greg about putting it on for camp not waiting employees. Just in brief, what it is, is just a very quick, brief working idea for the employees to say someone got hurt on a scene somewhere far away, something they can do to control serious bleeding and things like that, and make sure everything until because people get there to take over. Very, quite honestly, it's a basic course, but like I said, I am a state certified instructor, and I talked to Gary, we would like to put it on for the employees at their convenience, obviously, I understand they're busy right now. And obviously, I was just looking for your permission to do that if the board doesn't have a problem.
And I do not at all, I don't think the other Commissioners do, we'll make a motion here, I'd also like to include the courthouse in that as well.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
So, not that we're gonna have major incidents here, but it just takes one time.
Hopefully, hopefully, nothing ever, but I think it would really be good, you know, for Greg's people. You know, God forbid, Mike get cut by a chainsaw or something like that, just sort of know very basic procedures, what to do, again, like I said, because people get on there.
Yeah, and YouTube can coordinate what's best for the both of you.
I'll work with his schedule completely, I know they're busy, and even if we have to wait until, you know, fall or winter, it would have to be that.
And probably here at the courthouse through Sheila's office, since she sends out the mass emails, just whenever you want to coordinate that. And I don't mean to dumb more on you, Sheila, but at least you're sending out the notification and he can do the work.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm happy, I'll do all the work.
Well, gentlemen, do I hear a motion to approve Alan to provide this training for county employees? I'm just gonna leave it at that. That win covers every department, as we go forward, if there's somebody else out there.
I make that motion?
I have a motion by Bob there, your second?
My second.
I have a second by Joel, all in favor, aye. Thank you, Alan. Any other elected officials, department heads, Susan, you have anything? Jack, I'm sorry, I knew you did.
Yeah, I got a few things. The EMA has been working with the siren committee we put together after the March tornadoes. And our goal is about threefold, is to basically improve communication during emergency events, including severe weather, with the community. We're looking at a couple of things on the tornado sirens. We're wanting to increase the sites that we have and cover some areas in the county that don't have that protection. And we're wanting to update some of our outdated equipment. We have some encoders that were state of the art fifteen years ago when they went in that are no longer really cutting the mustard, we need to upgrade those. So I'm here today seeking your blessing or approval for the committee to pursue some funding opportunities. We're not quite to the point where we want to come in with a grant request like we do through the ordinance with a budget and all that information, but we are putting some feelers out there, talking to some people, trying to generate some revenue for this project. And we thought you guys should be aware of it, and we'd like to know if that's okay.
Absolutely, I don't know that we need a motion on that, I mean, anytime we got an opportunity to find money, we want to go after it. So whatever form that is, donation, grant, whatever it may be, yeah, please pursue that, and as you said, bring it back to us, and we'll see how that lays out. I also spoke to you, and I talked to Bruce Hanlon a little bit about it, and Sheila and I have spoke. If it ever happens that there's possibly some more ARPA funds coming, we could use some of that money to help fund some of those additional sirens, and I'm all for that. Our county has been pummeled with storms and tornadoes and things like that here recently, so the more protection we can get out there, the better. I'm curious to-
Especially the last two years, seeing my last two years have been horrible.
You know, if we could take that ARPA funds, which is taxpayer dollars, and put it back into a safety measure, absolutely. I'm curious to what one of those cost. If, I mean, you'd have to do some work, I'm sure.
Neighborhood of thirty thousand.
Cheaper than I thought, to be honest with you.
Per site, Jack?
Yeah, per site.
That's total installation, everything that would go along with that.
Okay. How many more are you anticipating, Jack, just out of curiosity?
I would like to throw the ballpark out, ten. We've, yeah, we've been discussing that, and maybe, maybe just a little bit less, but Suzanne has done some great work on the map and shows us the range of them, and so we got a real good idea of where we need to place these things to give maximum coverage to the most populated areas. She has all that data, and she's been working with us, and she does very work, and so we're not quite ready to talk about locations or some things like that yet, but nine or ten is what we're looking at, additional.
Additional.
But adding nine or ten, yeah.
How many we got now?
So twelve.
We got a big count, yeah. And I'm gonna make this statement, if we get that money, and I'm gonna say yes, because we're still in progress, Sheila and I talked a little bit about this morning. If we can donate two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the Water Corporation to expand water, there's no reason that we couldn't fund three hundred thousand dollars to pay for all these. Now, I'm not telling you, don't stop, try to pursue your avenues, but from this board's standpoint, I'd like to think that we would be able to do that, or willing to do that.
Bruce Hanlon is very passionate about this project, and I think he called me five times yesterday with updates on himself, too. He's a real go getter, we're very fortunate to have him, not only on this committee, but in the county.
He'll do R E M C.
So, he has one of his contacts, he has several others, and he's working pretty hard. And we do have one organization that has almost committed to sponsoring one site. We'd like to open that invitation up for any group, business, individual that wants to fund or partially sponsor a site, would be more than welcome.
Would our Chamber of Commerce not be an avenue to put that out for you?
Well, I, yeah.
You might put a feeler out.
Yeah, Bruce is working with the Community Foundation, and he's pretty good at this, he's got a lot of contacts already, so, but I'm sure he'll be in touch with those folks, and I'm working in the department on the security side of it, and Anton's on the committee as well, it's Kathleen, Suzanne, and we're all doing what we can to get it funded, so.
Sounds good.
There's no way we can get it completely funded, but every little bit helps, and we've already got some commitments, so.
Good.
That's all I got on that. I run a status test yesterday, as you guys know by email, and the the best I can tell, the Q knot siren is down. I called it there to make sure they had power in the area before I went too far. All it's saying is power off. And normally that indicates that the power supply has gone bad. But I'm not a technician, that's not, that's not what I do. I called the ERS, which is the people we have, the contractor to repair them. Well, they sent me an email that she is in the process of scheduling a technician, but I don't know when they're gonna get up there. It'll probably be in the next day or two, but I haven't got confirmation on that yet.
Just please keep us in the loop as soon as that's backed up and running.
We'll do it. If it is a power supply, you guys approved me to buy one of those to put on the shelf, and I ordered it the next day, and it has not come in yet. But the one that technician ordered for Gospor is in, and we have a loaner in Gospor, so we may be able to take it to Q knot and get it up and going in a couple of days. That's the best case scenario, that's what we're hoping for. So I talked to the technician about it yesterday, although he hasn't received his marching orders to go up there, we've got a plan on how we're gonna attack it. The two grants that I have that have been showing red all this time, they have both completely been reimbursed. So that reimbursement process is over, the county has passed their money. More severe weather coming in tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon especially. National Weather Service is not saying too much about it yet, but TV people seem to be worked up about a little bit, so we'll put them in there, I'm sure Greg and I'll probably be ready. Do we have any updates on the construction of the office?
Waiting on Steve to get the state design, because it's a- Waiting on Steve to get the state design, because it's a government facility, and I know this didn't happen with the sheriff's side of it, because we never stopped, but I spoke to Susan about this, and it is required by the state to have a design. Steve and his people went in there and drew up some plans for it, and they have sent it off to the state. We're just waiting on it to come back.
Okay.
So that's where we're at.
All right.
The ball's in the motion, but when it goes, you know, county government's slowing up, but when it gets to the state, we know what happens, right? So we also touched on communication with these storms, Jack, and I don't know if you were aware, commissioners pass sometimes back to have radios accessible to us during events. We have a health radio now with the eight hundred, and also Greg's working on, he's ordered one for the highway frequency. Because of the power outage, commissioners have no way of communicating to protect the citizens of this county, so we now have radios or will have radios communication.
You have an update with it, Joe?
As of this morning, I am supposed to call back this afternoon.
I'd just like to know what top groups or frequencies you're going to be communicating on, so I'll I'll know ahead of time, so be able to.
I plan on being on Highway Department, because and that's due in part, but me and Greg worked a lot in my district, and we were running around, and he tried to call me, and I called him, and as you know, Wi-Fi was or signal was gone, and it was really, it was kind of terrible, really.
The radios that Jack that I have the ability to get, and we've ordered them so the commissioners can have radios, just falls under the Highway Department and the ability to monitor Owen County Fire. So they monitor Owen County Fire, and then it has all three of the highway frequencies.
So you're talking about portals?
Yes.
Is it is that just a picture word? Is there any little licensing issue there? Nothing?
No, I would look for nothing.
And Christine has already given me one through the Health Department with the eight hundred.
So you can see.
I do have one. She ordered a new one, and she's going to pay for it through grant, but she gave me one of them that they had in here.
I think Gary and Joel may have a little problem hitting a repeater with a portable from your house. That's a long trip.
Well, Greg, you made a comment that we may need to mount one. We'll see. We'll we'll.
The commissioners, we we can talk, they chose a portable, but I'd suggest that at least Gary and Joel have radios put in their office fields.
So that's up. We'll just have to see once we get them and see where we're at.
Just County Highway, I think, and one of you guys agree or not, it probably is your best that for contacting like an eighty four, because you can always get ahold of dispatch through County Highway.
Right.
We can get you in touch with whoever, even if we have to relay information, do you agree, disagree, or? I think that's perfect. I think, I mean, you talk.
And it's also a little less, that's what I'm looking for. It's not monitored so much.
Right, right. Not as much traffic on.
Can you communicate with Highway from your, okay, so in turn, Highway can get ahold of you?
You know, the ability to monitor fire just allows us to know where all the emergencies are at. It means we need to get somewhere to get them through.
And that has been great for us.
And what this stems from is the last storm that pretty well, I'm not talking about the tornado, but the one after that that covered widespread. I was without power for four days, I think Joel was as well. That's good.
Bob's fine.
Yeah, Bob's fine.
Bob's fine.
But I'm talking no cell service, no landline. What landline we had was like static underwater, so communication was absolutely horrible. I spoke to you on the landline briefly, so that was the purpose of that, and it's been voted on and approved and all that, so I just want to get you up to speed on that if you did not know.
I would like to clarify what I said to Joel. You asked if I could communicate with County Highway? I can't. If I go to that channel, I do not monitor that channel.
Okay.
Because there's so much.
But in turn, will we have?
Non emergency traffic.
Would there be, Greg, you can answer, is there an opportunity where I could communicate with Jack? Or will it only be highway related?
Jack, we have to notify Jack. What Jack knows.
I can go to the channel.
You can monitor.
Let's go to twenty four seven. In the office at home, we're in the trap. Just because there's so much non emergency traffic out there, just anytime they're talking and then emergency traffic comes on, I won't hear it, because County Highway has that radio tied to that.
They could notify dispatch to have Jack get on that frequency. Yeah.
They could always get to Jack.
That that always works. That's the easiest, honestly, just use us as a middle person.
Everything goes to nine eleven.
They monitor everybody.
Right. Okay. Any other department head, elected official, not all that up to the public, Jeff?
Hi.
I'd have bet money you were going to say something.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
You're fine.
At Fish Creek Road, I'd like to start with a couple of observations. One is, I'm real, I know going through every road of Jefferson Township was a lot, but it also gives the public an indication of how many roads there are in this county. So it really is a good idea. So I'm grateful you guys did that. Secondly, they're out there on Fish Creek Road right now, doing the side of the road, looks a lot better, okay? And during these storms, we have a lot of trees come down, okay, along the road, and it's a it's a real task, you know, if you look around here, it's a real task. Now, I want to switch to two other items. One is, I've been driving the roads through this county like you guys have a long time, and I drive on Rocky Hill Road occasionally. Rocky Hill Road has a speed limit of thirty five, and I've during the repave of forty six, I've been driving on hardscrabble road, and it has a speed limit of thirty five. Rocky Hill Road is straight, and it's hardscrabble road is generally straight. I'd like to investigate the possibility of lowering the speed limit on Fish Creek, because it's curvy, it's up and down, and it's all that kind of stuff. It's currently forty five, okay? And so I'd like to investigate that possibility. How many people need, is it a petition? Is it, what do you do?
No, you can just bring it to to Greg's attention. He can bring it to us, and we'll have an ordinance put together on it. In the time that I've been here, and I did not know that Fish Creek was forty five. I thought we had two roads in the county that were at forty or forty five, and that was County Line and Freeman Road.
Under ordinance.
Under ordinance, yeah.
That's probably because that number's like the state.
Yeah, so we need to address that.
Yeah, so so, you know, it's up and down and lots of turns, and you guys have been on there, so you know. Okay, and then the last thing I'd like to address in my three minutes is, I don't know what you guys are going to talk about, the horse ordinance this morning, but I'm a little mystified about, I'm a little concerned about the the, I don't know what you guys are going to say about horseshoes, and we just had a repave of the Horstens campground road, and it's spectacular, okay? And it really is neat, and we paid to that. But I don't know, I don't know what they're talking about, casual use, what they're talking about, because we have shoes on our horses, and this is a personal comment, you know, we need to keep the shoes on the horses. So I don't know what kind of story you have with respect to shoes on the horses, but I I just would wonder if it's, you know, the level of damage they're going to do versus the level of damage that is done otherwise, or could be done otherwise. I understand the whole thing about the metal rim, wheels digging into the end of the pavement, but I just, I don't know, I don't know.
You're going to read the ordinance here in full just a little bit.
All right. Okay, that's it, that's all I got.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to comment, I didn't know we were going to address that again today. We're doing it solely in part because of the the drawn vehicles. We know people still going to ride their horses and things of that nature, but we're talking in a in a situation where these folks use it as daily transportation, and I can assure you that this is badly needed. I can drive you right out to Denmark Road. There's plenty of places I can see the shoes are already beginning to take a turn at all on on our roads, so this is due in part to the 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 population of Amish who are drawing vehicles every day. The common everyday horse, we can control that. I can't ask you to license plate your horse. What I can ask you to do is is abide by some of the ordinances we adopt and and try to conform to what shoes we ask to be used at what times of the season.
Okay, well, I'll I'll be listening.
Well, I I'll speak to that just a little bit. The normal riding horseshoe isn't going to have some type of material added to it usually for a regular riding horseshoe, will either come as a plate or rim or, you know, heel or toe, but it's that soft steel. I don't think that will harm the roads. We're talking about horseshoes that have drill tech applied, that's a very, very hard metal, and it cuts the road very badly, so it probably doesn't affect normal riding horses. I will note that I had my horses shot this weekend, and I bought Owen County, the farrier said I bought Owen County legal horseshoes because they had Borm on them instead of drill tech.
I'm sorry? Because they had Borm?
Borm, yes.
Okay, that's what ours have.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. It's a personal problem.
Are you saying Borm are better for the roads?
It is, they are.
All right. Because it is.
That's, yeah. The drill tech actually, it's usually very, very sharp, and it just absolutely cuts the road in form, doesn't do that hard.
And if you take, as Greg kind of testified, you see a team of six coming down the room, they weigh two thousand pounds apiece, those draw animals, that is hard on a road.
Any other public comment? Sheila? Nothing?
Nothing, Sheila? Nothing?
Got budgets to work on, come on.
All right. Dana?
Okay, I have three ordinances for you today. The first is the horse drawn vehicle and horseshoe requirements, and this is the same ordinance that I passed out for the previous meeting. The only changes made was to add fund lines that created for the sheriff and for the Highway Department to put the funds in. Otherwise, it is substantially its change. I did for this year's license extend the date for registration, because this, as an ordinance that has penalties, it does have to be published twice to be effective, so. So this this one's pretty long. Ordinance establishing animal drawn vehicle regulations and horseshoe requirements in Owen County, Indiana. This would be ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh oh nine. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Owen County desire to maintain the county roads under its jurisdiction and control to be safe, secure from dangerous traffic patterns, whereas the Board of Commissioners of Owen County desire to protect the asphalt, concrete, and other hard surface roads and highways of the county, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of Owen County find this ordinance would promote the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of the citizens of Owen County. Now therefore, be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County as follows. Section one, definitions. For the purpose of this subchapter, the following definitions shall apply unless the context clearly indicates or requires a different meaning. County road. Any public vehicle, particular thoroughfare, or public way owned, operated, or maintained by Owen County, Indiana. The term does not include privately owned and maintained roadways or drives, nor public ways owned, operated, or maintained by the state or an incorporated municipality. Horse. Horse has the meaning, usual meaning, but also includes similarly employed draft animals such as mules, ponies, oxen, and the like. Horse drawn vehicle. One, a buggy carriage, driveway wagon, or similar vehicle designed and intended to use one or more horses as motive power and use for the purpose of transporting persons or cargo. Two, the term does not include field wagons, i.e. wagons used primarily for field work and not typically used in the conveyance of persons or commodities on the roads, nor horse drawn agricultural implements relative to the code sections pertaining to fees, but shall include the field wagons and agricultural implements in sections which pertain to Owner. Any person, individual, partnership, corporation, association, or quasi legal entity that owns, rents, leases, or otherwise has primary use or control over a horse drawn vehicle. Operator. The individual who is present and upon the horse or within the horse drawn vehicle at the time of violation of the horseshoe requirements of this ordinance is observed. Section two, license required. It shall be unlawful for any person to drive or for any owner to permit to be driven any horse drawn vehicle upon or across a county road unless the vehicle is properly licensed as provided herein. It shall be unlawful for any person to drive or for any owner to permit to be driven any horse drawn vehicle upon or across a county road with an expired numbered metallic tag. It shall be unlawful to transfer the numbered metallic tag from one horse drawn vehicle to another horse drawn vehicle, or from one owner to another owner. No refund of any fees is available on sale. It shall be unlawful for any person to drive or for any owner to permit to be driven any horse drawn vehicle upon or across a county road unless the license registration receipt required herein is in possession of the operator or contained on or within the horse drawn vehicle. Section three, application and fee. The owner of a horse drawn vehicle wishing to obtain a license to operate the vehicle on the county roads may apply for the license at the office of the Owen County Highway Department during their regular office hours. The applicant shall pay, and the Owen County Highway Department or an authorized designee shall collect a non prorateable and non refundable license fee of sixty-five dollars per vehicle at the time application is made, for which the applicant shall be given a proper registration. The application and license itself, when issued, shall include the following, on its face, the following. One, a description of the vehicle. Two, the name and address of the owner. Three, the amount of license paid and receipt number. Four, the expiration date of the license. Five, the signature of the owner. And six, the number of the licensing plate tag. In the event an owner of a horse drawn vehicle fails to register by May thirty first of the applicable license year or within thirty days of acquiring a new horse drawn vehicle, they shall pay late fee of twenty-five dollars in addition to the annual license fee. For the first license term beginning in twenty twenty-three, the payment's forty dollars, and registrations are due by September fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Section four, issuance and term of registration to be carried in vehicle. When the application is made, fee paid, and all other requirements herein are fulfilled, the Owen County Highway Department or designee shall prepare and give to the applicant a written license registration signed and validated by the Owen County Highway Department or their designee. All licenses irrespective of when issued shall be valid only through the next succeeding May thirty first. The owner shall cause the license registration be carried in the vehicle at all times when the same is being driven on county roads. Section five, license tag. The Owen County Highway Department shall provide a numbered license tag for each vehicle license as required herein. The tag shall be of sturdy weather resistant material suitable for a fix for fixture to the rear or left side of the licensed vehicle in a readily visible location, and shall so be affixed by the owner, and shall be of sufficient size that it may be easily observed by law enforcement following at a safe distance or passing the horse drawn vehicle in a motor vehicle. The plate or tag shall contain numerical denotations and collar coding to indicate the expiration date of the vehicle's license. In the event that a license or tag is lost, destroyed, or otherwise needs to be replaced, the requesting individual shall sign an affirmation statement and pay an applica- any applicable fees prior to the license, the issuance of a replacement license or and or tag. The Owen County Highway Department shall collect the sum of ten dollars for a replacement license and or tags. Section six, delivery of fees. Any license fee, late fee, replacement fee collected by the Owen County Highway Department shall be delivered to the Owen County Auditor for deposit. Collected funds shall be placed in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund number ninety-one seventy-five. Collected funds shall be placed in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund number ninety-one seventy-five. Section seven, slow moving vehicle emblem is required. Consistent with Indiana Code nine dash twenty-one dash nine dash two, whenever a horse drawn vehicle is moved, operated, or driven on a county road, the vehicle shall display a triangular slow moving vehicle emblem mounted as near as practical to the center of mass and at an approximate height of not less than three feet and not more than five feet from ground level or road surface. The emblem shall be mounted so as to be entirely visible from the rear, day or night. The emblem and the emblem's position of mounting on the vehicle must meet the specifications established by rules adopted by the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. Section eight, flashing lights requirement. Consistent with Indiana Code nine dash twenty-one dash nine dash four, when a horse drawn is moved, operated, or driven on a county road at a time or under circumstances during which the use of lighted lamps on vehicles is required, the horse drawn vehicle must display, in addition to the slow moving vehicle emblem, a red or an amber flashing lamp mounted at the height as low as practical that is visible from a distance of not less than five hundred feet to the rear. The red or amber flashing lamp may be used at times other than when light lamps are required. A double face flashing lamp may be used, displaying amber light to the front and red or amber light to the rear. Section nine, horseshoe requirements. From May first until the following October first, it shall be unlawful for any person to be an operator of or to cause any horse or horse drawn vehicle to be operated on any asphalt, concrete, or other hard surface road or highway of the county, road or highway of the county, which has been fitted with horseshoes upon which has been applied a sharp edged compound or mounded material. It is permissible to use a horse which has been fitted with plain shoes made of steel to which have been added a material no harder than horseshoe borium. One, the borium may be mounted smoothly in three mound style, no higher than three sixteenths inch with no more than one mound on the toe and a single mound on each heel of the horseshoe. Two, all mounds will cover the flat area of the shoe, toe of the shoe to each nail crease and from the taper of the nail crease on each heel. Three, the mounds must be smooth and without sharp edges and must be applied to plain, non-toed, non-heeled shoes. Four, it shall be unlawful for any horseshoe to contain a material harder than borium or applied in any method not provided herein between May first and the following October first. It is permissible from October first to the following May first to substitute fine drill tech for borium in the same application techniques, conditions, and specifications as were aforementioned for the application of horseshoe borium. Horseshoes with styles of lump, compounded, sharp edged, or mounded materials shall be unlawful other than as provided herein. It shall be unlawful for any person to be an operator or to cause any horse or horse drawn vehicle to be operated on any newly resurfaced or repaired county road until sufficient time for payment curing has elapsed, as determined from consultation with the officials of the Owen County Highway Department. If any owner or operator of any horse drawn vehicle refuses to lift the horse's hoof for a shoe inspection or refuses to take the horse to another place for inspection, shall be considered in violation of this section. Section ten, wheel rims. No person shall operate a vehicle on any paved road when said vehicle is riding upon wheel rims designed for pneumatic tires when said tires are not also in use. Section ten or eleven, enforcement. It shall be the duty of the Owen County Sheriff's Department to enforce this ordinance and any duly qualified enacting law enforcement officer serving in Owen County, Indiana, may enforce the terms of this ordinance. Procedures for arrest and court appearances shall be in accordance with Indiana Code nine dash thirty dash three as amended. Proceedings for ordinance violation enforcement shall be in accordance with Indiana Code thirty-four dash twenty-eight dash five as amended. Section twelve, penalty. Any violation of sections two and four. Section two is the license and four is carrying the registration in the vehicle. So any violation of either of those sections of this ordinance shall be subject to a fine of seventy-five dollars per occurrence. Any violation of seven or eight, which are the... Seven is the slow moving emblem and eight is the flashing lights. So a violation of those ordinances shall be subject to a fine of fifty dollars per occurrence. Any violation of nine or ten, which is the horseshoe requirements and the wheel rims of this ordinance, shall be subject to a fine of one hundred dollars per occurrence and shall pay restitution of any and all county expenses to repair damaged roadways. All fines and restitution collected shall be delivered to the Owen County Auditor for deposit. Collected fines shall be divided in half, with one half being placed in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund number ninety-one seventy-five and the other placed in Owen County Sheriff Fund number ninety-one seventy-four. All restitution funds shall be placed in the Motor Vehicle Highway Fund as herein described. The county attorney is authorized to represent the county commissioners in prosecuting violators in any, in all legal actions necessary to collect the fines for violations of this ordinance. The violator is liable for all costs incurred by the county for prosecution to collect said fines, including but not limited to court costs and attorney fees. Passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, State of Indiana, in a regular meeting of on the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-three. And again, this will require being published twice in the newspaper to become fully effective.
Thank you Dana. Jeff, did that answer any questions that you had or concerns or?
It certainly answered the questions about the horse. I love the fact that it's in the ordinance, so that's good.
And if you'd like to be the shoe inspector, you're more than welcome.
No, I was wondering who is the shoe inspector.
That's a good question. I'm guess we're gonna lay that on Greg. I'm not really sure.
Commissioners, as I've said before, I think as a horse owner and most horse owners involved, we had to do this for some rules for just to protect our own roadways. I think once the information's out, I think you'll see very little in violation because I think you're dealing with some folks that are very good stewards in general of what they're doing. So I think once the ordinance goes into effect, it's getting the word out. I think everybody will pretty much follow our requests.
And I'm gonna assume, since we have to advertise this, I'm sorry Jeff, go ahead.
No, so I think it would be good for all of us who know a farrier, okay, to take this and point it to them because they'll be in a position to really help keep this under control.
And that's kind of where I was going with this because of newspaper advertisement, social media is not accessible to those folks out there. So I'm gonna leave it up to Joel and Greg that live in that district to make sure that this gets out. I don't know how else to advertise it other than to get it out by word of mouth.
We can handle the district and the Amish community, we can handle that. I think the rest is just, we'll put it on.
Be the normal website, yeah.
We'll put it there, we'll ask anybody's got any contact, you know, with farriers, send me the number, I'll send you the information.
Yeah.
Yeah, don't be fooled, they do look at the internet occasionally. Some, so.
I wouldn't want to say that, gentlemen, thank you.
It'd be hard to get the word out by any stretch of imagination.
Well, this is kind of a two-year in progress, I think. So it's finally here. I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three zero zero nine. Ordinance establishing animal drawn vehicles regulations and horseshoe requirements in Owen County, Indiana. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion with step twenty twenty-three day zero zero nine.
I have a motion by Bob there, second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
And Dana, since we already knew about this ordinance, we're not ignoring you, we're trying to sign these road forms as you speak, so, because they're such a large stack.
That's fine, that's fine. Yes, I had gotten it to you already.
And Sheila, I'm gonna make the request again for just this, that we get stamps with our signature so we can. And we can bring them to the meeting, but yeah, this is, I've switched ink pens already, so. I can't switch hands.
Okay, the next ordinance would be ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash zero one zero. This is an ordinance declaring certain personal property of the Owen County Government as surplus and certain personal property as worthless. Whereas the Owen County Government has determined that certain personal property currently in possession of the Owen County Government as listed in attachments one and two attached heretofore is no longer of value to Owen County. Whereas pursuant to the provisions of Indiana Code five dash twenty-two dash twenty-two at sequence, the Board of Commissioners of Owen County has determined and declared the personal property listed in attachment one as surplus and has a value of less than five thousand dollars and no single item is valued more than one thousand dollars and should be sold on GovDeals. Because it's below those limits, it does not have to be publicized, just can be put on GovDeals and done. Whereas the personal property listed in attachment two was offered for the sale to the highest bidder by an internet auction site, GovDeals dot com, in accordance with Indiana Code five dash twenty-two dash twenty-two dash four point five, and received no bids. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of Owen County desire to give any department of Owen County a final opportunity which expires one week from the date of this ordinance's adoption to take possession of any of the personal property listed in attachments one and two for use within their department. Whereas Indiana Code five dash twenty-two dash twenty-two dash eight allows personal property that is worthless to be demolished or junk. And whereas pursuant to the provisions of Indiana Code five dash twenty-two dash twenty-two at sequence, the Board of Commissioners of Owen County has determined and declared the property listed in attachment two that is not taken by the, in any Owen County Department for use therein for after one week from the date of this ordinance adoption is worthless. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County the following. Section one, Owen County Departments, any department of Owen County has one week from the date of this ordinance's adoption to take possession of any of the personal property listed in attachment one and two for use within their department. Section two, personal property to be sold or junk. The items of personal property of the Owen County Government as shown on attachment one are declared surplus property and are hereby ordered to be sold to the highest bidder at public auction to be held on an internet site maintained by GovDeals dot com. In the event any items do not sell using the GovDeals dot com auction, they shall be declared worthless and are hereby ordered to be demolished or junk. Section three, personal property to be demolished or junk. The items of personal property of the Owen County Government as shown on attachment two that is not taken by any Owen County Department for use therein after one week from the date of this ordinance's adoption is declared worthless and is hereby ordered to be demolished or junk. Passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, State of Indiana, in a meeting, regular meeting held the nineteenth of July twenty twenty-three. Just comments on this, again, attachment one are four items that did not get onto the original list. And the attachment two is the property that did not sell. To make things easier and quicker, I did add that whatever of this surplus property on attachment one didn't get sold can automatically be determined as worthless and gotten rid of, so it doesn't need a separate ordinance. Good. I would recommend is occasionally that these surplus items be brought to the board, especially, like I said, if they're under five thousand dollars collectively or under a thousand dollars any one, you don't have to go through that application process, you can just put it on GovDeals. So with that.
And again, for those that are listening on YouTube and Sheila can get it out to the departments, we have a substantial list of tables, chairs, desktop copiers, things that did not sell. Some of these tables are decent, they're lightweight tables, some of this type of stuff. So if there's departments out there that need them, can use them, please do, otherwise it's gonna end up in a dumpster. So with that being said, Steve will have that stuff down at the Armory Basement. So at the end of the... Does this happen to be advertised as well Dana?
No.
As it goes into effect immediately, so.
Yeah.
Seven days from today, this stuff will be gone, so please go down and take a look. So do I hear a motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-three, an ordinance declaring certain personal property of Owen County Government a surplus, certain personal properties as worthless?
I make that motion on twenty twenty-three zero ten.
I have a motion by Bob there, second?
Second.
Second by Joel, all in favor?
Aye.
And I think Dana has one more for us.
Yes, this would be ordinance number twenty twenty-three dash oh eleven. This is an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero five six regarding the depth of underground cables and utility line. Whereas ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero six and ordinance establishing standard permit conditions for whole lines, underground cables and utility lines was passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County on the second day of November twenty twenty. Whereas said ordinance in section one, paragraph A, reads in part as follows. All cables and utility lines shall be located a minimum forty-eight inches below ground level, which has been codified in the Owen County Ordinance, section ninety-four point oh five oh A. Whereas the Board of Commissioners have determined that the depth of cables and utility lines should be thirty-six inches below ground level. And whereas the Board of Commissioners have determined that this amendment would be beneficial to the economic growth of Owen County, is sufficient to protect said utilities and is in the best interest of the citizens of Owen County. Now therefore be it ordained by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County the following. The portion of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero six, section one, paragraph A, was codified in the Owen County Code, section ninety-four point oh five of O A. That reads, all cables and utility lines shall be located a minimum of forty-eight inches below ground level, shall be amended to read, all cables and utility lines shall be located a minimum thirty-six inches below ground level. Again, it's only that number. Passed and adopted by the Board of Commissioners of Owen County, State of Indiana, in a regular meeting held on the nineteenth day of July twenty twenty-three.
Thank you Dana. And again Greg, I think that that's probably gonna cover us countywide. Stop you from being a bad guy, right? Joel has stepped up for just a second, so I'm gonna wait just a minute or two here for him to come back before I ask for a motion on this.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
Go back to the, I can advertise on July the twenty-sixth and August the second for the horse, so does it become effective?
Upon the second.
So anytime after August the second.
I'm glad that you brought that back up because are we going to be prepared and ready for license plates, stickers, whatever, within that period of time? You'll have some of those available?
Yes.
And you've got somebody lined up to collect those fees and keep track of all that?
That's the first one.
I can do the first one.
Okay, probably a good idea, yeah. All right, with Dana reading the final ordinance, ordinance number twenty twenty-three zero eleven, an ordinance amending ordinance number twenty twenty zero zero five six regarding the depth of underground utilities, cables and utilities. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Joel, do I hear a? I have a motion by Joel, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Bob, all in favor?
Aye.
Commissioners, I'd also like to let you know this isn't for adoption today, but, um, I am gaining ground on an ordinance establishing the requirement of a logging permit. Um, the, uh, a permit will be required, of course there has to be an application. Um, a question I have for the commissioners is the fee, um, for the permit. Um, kind of an average in the area seems to be around two hundred dollars um, for the fee, uh, for the, the, the logging permit. So I wanted to know if you guys.
You're basing that on Monroe County, Brown County, those type of things?
Yes, some are really cheap and some are five hundred dollars, so, um, but, uh, we just wanted to determine what.
And DNR was here some way, we talked, he's got a little bit of concern, we're, we're not gonna cut the legs off of loggers, but we've gotta protect our roads. Uh, I, I did talk to Greg this week, talked to Dana about Jerry Kinzer out on Fish Creek Road, he is, has got an insurance bond. Dana's working on that. He had a suggestion, and I wanna run this by you Greg, real quick. Monroe County has got a five thousand dollar cash bond on roads. They have a lot more money than we do.
Their bonds have ranged between five thousand and twenty-five thousand.
So what I wanted to ask you is, is fifteen to twenty thousand a fair number? We're not a county that can go out and totally repave a road after somebody's destroyed it, but this is a fair amount to go back and repair.
Yes, I think if, uh, Tony, to be honest with you, I think twenty-five thousand dollar bond would be fair. You know, if we're talking long stretches of roadway and, uh, there are new roadways. You know, maybe there should be even a higher bond, for instance, if we're gonna log on a hard scuffle road right now or Concord, if it's resurfaced, I think we should require a bond if the road is damaged to a great extent that we can reboot.
Well, we've run into this already in the springtime, back with out on Delmon Road, uh, go ahead, I'll.
I'm, I'm just certain, because I'm, I mean, are farmers gonna be expected this, of this due?
Farmers are excited.
So why is logging accepted when logging and forest management busy farming projects? It hasn't been a long time.
I'll have to get legal on that, I can't answer that for you because counties have different ordinances versus farming versus logging. And it's not the, it's not the.
I've worked in the logging industry before, if you can, Highway Department. And loggers are used to following rules in counties that, that are established, um, and I think if the rules are established, they would be glad to follow them. But Owen County has never had any rules, so there seems to be this pushback, we don't want this, but when we cross these county lines and we log it, for instance, not even close, Madison County, Brownland County, some of those, it's all rules. So there just needs to be a basis, they're not being punished. Uh, idle sheen like that, but they are in your roadways, that's a different location, we require, and the one thing I was gonna ask, if this brings it up. Uh, in locations, we require farmers to get permits to where they access the roadways, so the roadways aren't damaged when they go into other fields for coves.
Right.
When somebody comes in and asks for a permit, the Highway Department should be able to go out and decide, does there need to be a culvert or something put there to secure the roadway? Not at our expense, if there is, because they're property from what they're doing in order to access in and out of our roadway.
Yeah, that's one of the things I hadn't, um, that I hadn't got to yet, that I was gonna ask if they, uh, commissioners would like an ordinance on just a haul permit. So anyone that would be over.
And that's where we're kinda going with this, and I don't mean to interrupt you David, but it's Dana, I said Dana. It's not the harvesting of the timber.
I understand.
It is the trucking side of it, that's where the problems comes from.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay.
I mean, I, and I still just bring the concern again to, you know, as you know, Owen County, so it was heavily forested. Um, you know, all these Owen County residents, yeah, some loggers, many loggers may still continue logging in Owen County, but there may be some, you will lose some most, most likely, they're just gonna say, I'm done with logging in Owen County. And not just that, you're, you know, you're asking as long as it goes down, maybe five, ten, twenty thousand dollar bond. Um, that may affect the price they give these Owen County residents, uh, the money that they receive for their timber. Um, I mean, that's just a thought I think you guys should be thinking about in these.
What I'm thinking about as far as me sitting in this seat, and I've got a taxpayer out here on Fish Creek Road, our concern is getting beat up on the conditions of the road. You may, yeah, you've lived here for three years and the roads have been bad. They don't need to be bad, it's because we've let them get that way. We're trying to fix that problem, a- am I correct Superintendent? We, we have ignored these things for years. I've only sat in this seat for five years and we're trying to correct these things so people can drive on these roads. And if we don't protect our taxpayers, we're not doing our job.
Well, the taxpayers also may be receiving a lot less money.
And I understand that, so what do you want? You know, more for your timber or, or your car tore up because the road's not drivable, it's a catch twenty-two.
It's a difference, yeah, I understand.
Some of the local places I get.
Am I speaking out of turn?
No, you're, I, 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 I think more importantly is that we need to hold, hold those who are damaging and abusing our roads and, uh, held accountable by bonds.
Yes, they should fix them, and if they don't fix them, that's why the.
I can feed a log.
Brown County, Monroe County have this.
Oh, yes, I understand.
A license to log is like asking a farmer to buy a license to grow corn. What we need to do is make sure that if they're in Owen County, they register and they're bonded accordingly, so that we can hold them accountable in the long run. Okay? They tear a road up, we need to know, do they have enough money to fix that road? That's where it really comes from, because anybody could tear up a road, a farmer, we don't ask him to pull a permit to grow corn and soybeans. Uh, that's my understanding, Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, logging's agricultural.
It is.
That's exactly why.
So, so I think our research really needs to be, I understand what Gary's saying, but let's make sure whatever we do, we use our common sense. Because you talk about getting some people fluffed.
Well, it may get some people fluffed, but it also gets people fluffed. Uh, you see that term, uh, at my department. When there are violations and each and every one of you, uh, each and every one of you, I have confronted with this problem. And with hand is tied and we have talked to operations. Uh, you know, I've had, uh, somebody's stuck in the middle of roadways, loaded log trucks, uh, roads so soft that, you know, there is a point in time where I can impose an eight ton load and live in on certain roads for days. As the county highway superintendent, you impose that and they absolutely ignore everything that I ask them to do.
Well, I, I agree with that, there has to be an authority on this, and it has to be done correctly, so. Uh, I think it's well worth looking at and taking a good look at, and I agree with all aspects of it, but, uh, you know, we don't want to, we don't wanna step on, on the wrong feet here.
I second you saying harvesting is part of agriculture.
But the guys, they're, the beings these roads take, I saw it right up my road. Uh, logs trucks sneaking around and nailed down a state of road in a day, if they're all intent. Not all of us live on paved roads, by the way, folks. Some of us live on gravel roads.
And he's making a co- and I'll get you here in just a second Jeff, I promise. Making a comment about people making less money, but they're also profiting at the expense of the taxpayers.
Well, certainly.
So there's two sides to your story there.
Well, another avenue.
But what we're gonna do is, we're gonna let our attorney figure this out based on other counties and how it's dealt with, we've gotta protect ourselves.
And it's not just the, the residents receiving money, I'm talking about the hardwood industry, hardwood products, all the hardwood furniture, you know. If loggers just say, you know, I'm not even bothered with that property because they want twenty thousand dollars from me, for five hundred dollars, I have a patient fee, and you know, the timber's not the best, so they might just say, forget it, now you're affecting the hardwood industry.
This is a bond with a house. Um, you pay a premium, you don't pay twenty-five thousand dollars for the bond.
Exactly.
Um, and there's a big jump from twenty-five thousand up. So that's why a lot of places, or, I haven't found anybody that does over twenty-five thousand. Um, from, you know, a thousand to twenty-five thousand, there's not much change i- in, in the, the cost of that. Um, so what we're talking about is a few hundred dollars, uh, that, that you.
Right.
Use, so not.
And legitimate logging companies have no problem doing this, and I know that for a fact, I've spoke to Jerry Kinzer three or four times in the last couple of weeks. He has no problem with the bond. Well, yeah, but he's a legitimate logger.
And he doesn't ever intend on using that bond.
No.
He doesn't ever intend on.
He don't plan on tearing it up.
The other pro- you know, the other thing I think we all, the, you guys should take into consideration is the process of how this is gonna work if you guys go through with this. I mean, is this gonna be something where Greg goes up and, you know, sets, shows, sees the route, the conditions beforehand? Or is this something that, you know, somebody can just go out there, take a picture and send to you guys and say, look what's done?
No, we, we normally, and it's just we had an incident in Delmon Road back here in the winter time, had an eight ton limit on it, and are hauling eighty thousand pound trucks plus, we don't know what they weigh, because they're leaving out of the woods, and just destroyed a road that we repaved and ignored our load limit signs instead of calling the highway and doing their due diligence.
I understand that, how, like, a freshly paved road, it'll be easy to see the damage. How about, you know, roads like Fish Creek, uh, you know, pop holes everywhere, so one.
If they're gonna log it, eh, part of this ordinance that we're trying to put together would be that they would need to notify the Highway Department that this is the route they intend to use, absolutely.
They'll go out and look at it together, so that way I can't.
Absolutely.
Everybody can't go out there, take a picture and say.
Yeah, just pre-exam the road and say, hey, you guys gonna use it?
It's, it's not that hard.
I understand, I just wanna, you know, think in all angles, sir.
I think it's a good, I think we need to pursue it, but we need to do it wisely.
I don't have any more comments on that Dana.
The, um, application, I, I do have a, a draft list of what would go on to that application. It would be the property owner's contact information, the contractor's contact information, current deeds, um, uh, logging activity site information, uh, including the address, tax identification number, and total acreage involved in the logging activities. The anticipated dates of logging and activities are under that, can fluctuate, that's why it's anticipated. Um, complete a driveway permit, uh, for every entrance, uh, into the real estate to be used to support uh, logging ac- activities, even if the current driveway is being used. This will make sure that each entrance is designed to, to handle the, the.
And that's what you spoke of earlier Greg, right?
Yes.
Yeah, um, a letter of consent of the property owner in the event the property owner is not the contractor. Uh, detailed logging site plan showing the location of environmentally sensitive areas and the various logging activities. Um, this can be a simple sketch of, you know, this is where we're gonna stage, this is where we're gonna load trucks. Uh, this is where we're gonna do skids. Um, a statement signed by the contractor that the logging activities will be conducted in accordance with the Indiana Logging and Forestry Best Management Practices twenty twenty-two BNP Field Guide, uh, that is the, what is used in, in State Forest and, uh, many other several accountings that do these refer to these practices. Um, this helps protect the environment, uh, from like clear cutting and things like that. Um, non-contiguous parcels on, uh, of land on which logging activities will be conducted on a separate logging plan. So yes, there will be a plan that they have to have, and so, and they'll have to coordinate because of driveway permits, they'll be coordinating with Greg to, to determine what it was. Uh, so, uh, the other thing would be, I would have enforcement provisions, uh, for this. Uh, so the questions I have, um, that I'll need answered, you don't have to answer it now, you can get with me later. Um, I just needed to know what fee for the, uh, application fee you want to use and what bond amount that you, uh, would like to use for that. Um, and, uh, once I get this ready, if I don't have those numbers, I'll just leave it blank and get it to you.
I'll take Greg's recommendation on the bond amount at twenty-five, it says it's a percentage that they're paying anyone.
Commissioners, I believe, and it would fall under like any other construction utility that we deal with. If a company comes in and has a state blanket bond, then they should only have to get that bond one time, not for each project.
I just wanna make.
As long as they have proof of the bonding.
Not to step on the attorney, I just wanna make a correction there, the twenty twenty-two BNP manual does not, uh, talk anything about management techniques, patch cuts, clear cuts, or anything that what it is used for is in the State Forest system, what we use to protect water quality. So such as putting water bogs, how to, how to build roads, um, for the loggers, how they can build roads, what kind of seeds they use to rese- uh, reseed things, um, and all that's available online, but does not.
On personal property, that doesn't affect it as much, you're talking state property, because they can go out here on, on my property and just destroy the crack out of it.
Private property, there's.
That's what we're talking about, it's here as well, it's not just state.
On state property, that, that's understood.
Jeff?
Yeah, so during the comprehensive plan discussion, there were another people from logging industry who pointed to Monroe County and said, we're not going there to support Taylor's comment. Okay, we're not going there. So there's a balance, on the other hand, basically, I think, my input is the county needs to know what's going on and maybe can help the lawyer to say, well, go this way, sit that way, it'll be easier, right? And, and, and so I, I think that there's a tremendous value in doing this without being so draconian in that choose loggers away, because, you know, whenever I think about it, it is an important industry in this county and, and we all need the hardwood, uh, industry because, look at those tables, those tables are not made out of plastic, so anyway. Um, so I, you know, I, I support, you wanna have an ordinance that has controls of the things that we really care about without shutting down the industry, that's.
And I agree with you Jeff, a hundred percent, and that's, that's what we're trying to establish here, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stop the logging business. W- w- we had our own place logged four or five years ago, trust me, I, I, I understand that, but I wanna protect everyone involved.
I, I think the biggest statement we need to make is, we cannot correct the past, but we can protect the future. And I think, played by them rules, we'll be alright.
And, you know, for the bond limit set at twenty-five thousand, is that gonna be adjustable? What happens if it's a small sale and it's only, you know, they're only paying thirty thousand dollars for the timber stem? I mean, now you're asking, I get it, it's, it's returned to them, I, I understand all that, I'm just saying, if one logger.
That would determine what road they're on too, I mean, if they're traveling five miles down a road.
So can the bond be, you know, adjustable? Can it become with a meeting with Greg saying, hey, we're only taking this road for one mile?
Well, we'll have to take that under advisement with the attorney.
Yes.
Again, there's questions here that we can't answer.
Yep, I'm just.
Yeah, no, no, that, and that's, that's why we have these meetings and, and thank you for that. Uh, anything else? I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn unless we have commissioner comments, I have nothing.
I would like to know.
Oh, Greg has had one more thing and Sheila does.
The camera's froze somewhere along the way, but the volume is still.
Still going, okay Greg.
Um, we just received the purchase order from NDOT to continue with, uh, the twenty-three community crossings while we were sitting here, identified, uh, milestone of that, so we should be able to proceed.
Excellent.
The roads have been waiting, not to make.
And, and I said I didn't have anything, I got one real quick thing, when I leave this meeting, I'm meeting with our maintenance guy, Antel. Uh, like Bob's gonna join me to go over all the rubber roofs, they've got quotes ready for us and we're gonna proceed with that. Uh, so I think that's all I have.
Uh, did you wanna take more time with those quotes, or those bids Greg, or you?
Uh.
Thank you Joel, I forgot.
You know, commissioners, I, uh, looked at the quotes, um, they seem to be bid apples for apples, um. I, I think the higher quote was, uh, a little out of line, so you know, I did go online, uh, and checked out who, uh, DuBois Escavating LLC belonged to during the break. It says, uh, that its agent is, uh, Dana Wise, P Ridge Road. Um, and it is, uh, the quote design language for her, so we can. I was pleasure of the questions, I'll have to proceed.
Well, with that being said, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the fifteen hundred dollars by DuBois Escavating.
Fifty, five thousand, wasn't it?
Fifteen hundred.
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you commissioners, I will, uh, pass that, uh, information on. Uh, and I will get, uh, paycheck from the insurance company now that we, um. Uh, and I will get, uh, paycheck from the insurance company now that we, um, know whatever the settlement cost is.
Okay, thank you, guys. Uh, again, I made a motion to adjourn. There we go.
I think I said, well, yeah, whatever.
Third and fourth, all in favor? Got a, aye. Thanks, everyone.